They're all okay. They got to, uh, they got to, like, uh... Whatever, let's pick it up.
Get a picture of that.
What's that? I was wondering.
You're both informal, not only one.
What'd he say?
He said you're both informal.
Not as bad as you, though. Not as infamous as you. You know who you are. You ready?
Okay. We'll call meeting in order. Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance. United States of America. It is the Republic of the United States, one nation, and one God. Universal law, the Constitution, and its broad. Two hundred minutes of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, selectmen's meetings, meeting.
Um, yeah, I'm gonna make, you're gonna make those changes from small to date. Yep, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
I second it. On favor? Oh, sorry. Approve the warrants, twenty-nine, pay for warrants, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and June twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrant, twenty-nine, warrants, June eighteenth, and June twenty-fifth.
Second it. On favor?
You think my motion to ten?
We did. Did you get it? I read it today, so if you wanna look at it, I emailed Jed, he sent it to us today. Basically, they start in August, the next session.
Did everybody get my names or just?
It's up front of the table.
Okay.
But everyone wants the RSU committee report up front.
Work Commission's report. Ben.
Yeah, I got it, I need it too. I'll read it. Alright, so work started on Pratt Hill Road on June twenty-third. They'll be at the intersection, breaking up tar, digging rocks out of the road. Shoulder and ditch work will start on Monday. We're not working Thursday or Friday due to the holiday. We'll be meeting for a paving bid soon. Last we installed four driveway culverts on Town Farm Road and patch holes later in the week. And then, he gave me the update that I asked for last meeting on the grader. Greater repairs needed, parking brake, lights. When you say lights, what do you mean by lights? Is it a strobe light on top? Is it, is it headlights on this thing? Is it taillights?
I don't think that works. We need a strobe light, brake lights, but whatever can happen. Uh, I don't know, we need to make decisions right on that. I don't think we need much money for that, maybe useful. I think they think they're capable of tires, I have to go with price them. I mean, like, the ones they're on at the time, they don't do it.
But, but the lights of the, uh, the brake lights and the strobe?
Very much, uh, they haven't worked for a long time.
Okay.
Um, what, what it doesn't wait for you is, doesn't cost too much. We ran that big tractor out, that grader wall, so that smoothed the puddles up of some of the roads and, and, uh, I think that makes most people pretty happy. We're gonna need to grade that road at least before fall, we're gonna get that concrete back. If we grade it right now, it has to do with shit later this year, so if we keep them strings up a little now, it would get far of just doing a grading later in the year before the weeds and everything get out. Uh, that would save us money on that. I did put a, in a granite to get it graded, oh, three weeks ago, and I can have it next week. But I think we are in control of, I don't know, cause we can smooth out these puddles like grader walls.
Yes.
Not spend much money, you know?
No, it did a good job on Tucker Road, so.
And we can do once, we can do it once, creating this wall or pulling that in. Uh, we don't need a decision on the grader tonight.
Okay. Yeah, so you basically just said the rest of it, so. You basically said what, what's on the rest of the, if anyone wants it, it's probably up to the table.
I just, we did get more FEMA money, we just got a check for two hundred and seventy-three thousand, four thirteen.
So, I saw that, I know what this is going. What is, uh, is that, for any roads or dedicated?
They're all dedicated.
Well, what do you mean? Cause last time I talked to you before town meeting, you said we had two hundred and eight we could use for anything.
Yeah, that was a refund.
Okay, so this is, this is dedicated money?
Is that on top of the seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand? I got, I added the three at the bottom there that we received already? Down at the bottom?
No, it's right at the top. This is the money we received, seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven sixty-four eighty-six.
Okay.
So.
So we still have more coming.
Right, so back to my original question, of the seven sixty-nine, there was two hundred and, I don't remember now, two hundred and eighty?
Yeah.
That we can use anywhere? The rest of that seven sixty-nine has to be used in the dedicated roads. Is that correct? Okay. Do we have any more money that's coming? There is a refund? From FEMA?
We've only spent the two thousand and eight on FEMA repairs, that's it.
Okay. Okay.
So it's already spent.
Right, so we can use a hundred and eight out of this.
Right, for anything.
Yeah.
So, how would I want you to go back in my group money? Cause if you took it out, we would all be done.
Right, that's the reason, yeah.
Okay, good.
Our work must be completed by June of next year.
Okay.
You hear that, Ben?
Uh.
All that work of FEMA is gonna be completed by June of next year.
Yes. What we gotta do is get paid for about all, all the sites that they gave us money on. And that money was meant to take care of those, finish those problems. And, uh, then put our money back in our own account. So, we need to get rid of that whole.
So I looked at some of those, you asked about some paving on a few of the roads, and there is some money on Church Street, Darrington. I can't remember the third one.
Right, there was a section of Church Street, cause I got to give us money on, I don't know how much, but I showed them the area.
Yeah.
And I felt rather than just having a wall there and just due to that little section, we might wanna hold that, hang off that money, to run it in when we do.
Well, we ain't gotta pave Church Street before next June, they can give it to you there.
Well, we can, we can put a base in there, I guess, but, I don't know, we'll, we'll talk about what we're gonna do when we see the things in front of us.
Good.
There was a couple of hills, but I told them, we're, we're paved and washed out. The one on Darrington going up to Jasper, and then down on the back side across the old sack on the section, that was all ground. That was all paved and washed out. I think they used.
They did, I saw it.
Paid that?
Yeah. We'll look at it.
Yeah.
Constable report. You think John?
Uh, I'd say, I'm a sheriff and even I still look, maybe, uh, sometimes on the beach. I don't know, I think she's, I think they do strongholds. Her brother and her sister, I believe, talked to me, I heard from them since. But that's, most exciting, you guys are part of it.
Not the exciting one looking more.
Can I just thank the two residents on Pine Shores in the development who are heroes, they were given CPR for quite a while until that breaks.
Yep, they do.
Yep.
Hey, CEO report.
I didn't see one.
Thank you. A CEO report.
Nope.
Yeah.
Nope.
Planning board report.
We haven't met.
No, I haven't met, yep. Ad hoc planning committee.
We should have received, uh,
Business.
Proceed the rules for procedure, just the, that's what we see the bill. I agree to have the rules for the ad hoc committee to support you to the administrative organs. We only function under rules if they're approved by a select organ, it does not, uh, function in any rules otherwise.
Yeah. Put your thoughts, that's more of that. Lieutenant, lights are good, it's coming. Put your thoughts on this. What, yeah, what's pulled on the agenda for next meeting? What's pulled on the agenda for next meeting? We can't act on it, cause it's not on the agenda?
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, I thought, I thought I'm hard for you, Frank.
So, make it over there.
Honors committee. Did you meet?
I doubt it.
Five-one.
The only thing that, called the five-one, we gotta get him scheduled, so we'll put that on for next meeting?
Put eight on for next meeting?
Maybe get him in here in the next meeting, so we can do an annual review.
So you want an executive session on the next meeting?
Yes, please.
At what time? Or just during the meeting?
Yeah, we'll do it at the end. Alright, no, let's do it before. Um, six o'clock, that work for you?
Yep.
What, what?
Be able to vote on this?
Okay, we'll wait till then, okay, it's alright. I just wanna forget.
Treasury report.
I don't have much trade now, but next meeting I will.
Yep. Cemetery committee, report. It's nothing. Solid waste committee report.
We'll be meeting at the end of July, and plus, there's a lot of talk and trash running down. A lot of figures to report.
Recreation committee.
Um, swimming lessons starts next week, the seventh through the eighteenth. Uh, we do have discount tickets for Aberwold and Funtown, Sludge Town, and York's Wild Kingdom. I've given them to the A and S, which gets the counting ready, which she wants to know when. If you can purchase them, they're about ten dollars less than if you bought them at the gate.
Yep, wow.
Um, July nineteenth, we're having a summer games in Carriero B. And that's it.
Good. Anything on open session? Richard.
Yeah, I don't seem to see microphones on the agenda.
Speaking of that, we've had a request that if we can go to the microphone at the podium to talk, we'd appreciate it, cause if people at home can't hear what the crowd is saying.
Want me to go up there?
No, you're, you're, we get, we know what you're gonna say.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see them, on the agenda for the next meeting.
It's not in the budget.
But being told it's not in the budget, so. It's not in the budget, so.
We have the money in the budget.
Yeah, it's alright.
Next year?
You can, it's only six hundred bucks, I guess you could budget that.
We do have a microphone right here too, as well, so.
Yeah, wow.
Lee.
I'll budget somebody, we don't get the microphone.
Lee, go ahead.
I'd like to suggest that this is something that, uh, could be the subject of our fundraiser of one sort. I'm just gonna say that. Red lines, that way.
You hear me?
What?
You said that?
I can't hear what you're saying.
You won't be standing there?
That's why I have my microphone.
Go ahead, Lee.
It's not gonna help him here.
You will be so you can see my face and maybe read my lips.
I never been able to before.
Luckily enough. What I was suggesting is that microphones for the town hall for meetings might be a good subject for a fundraiser event.
Good idea.
I heard that.
Good.
Now, can I respond?
You have to talk directly to the select or not to.
The answer is wrong.
Go ahead.
For six hundred bucks, we don't have to go out there and get a fundraiser. And I know exactly who to contact and how to get them put in, including the boss and those with them, for six hundred bucks. And after all the money that's gone out on Brad Hill, and a few other things, I think this is penny's on the dollar.
Send, send me an email, Richard, with your contact, send me an email for what you want, your contact, and I'll see what I can do.
Send you an email?
Yeah. She's gonna put it on the town website. I don't know if it'll be tomorrow, but it'll be on there sometime.
Yeah, let me have your email number, and I'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Open session? No?
You wanna vote on that, starting early now?
Sure, we can wait till the end if you want, when we do the next, up to you. What's up for the next agenda, audience?
Okay.
We'll do it there.
Alright.
I don't wanna get out of order on that.
Calendar reminders, nomination papers deadline, seven, seven. Swimming lessons, July seventh, one and two to the eighteenth. Plan board meeting, July seventh, seven PM. Absentee ballots available on July twelfth. Recreation committee meetings, July fourteenth, five fifteen.
What question about it?
Yeah.
The Buckfield group, Southern Ad hoc Committee, they're only meeting July tenth at six-thirty at Southern Hall.
Is that for RSU? Okay, when, when is that?
Um, it's July tenth at six-thirty at Southern Hall.
That's the ad hoc.
Yeah, or.
Withdrawal? Did you go to the one in Buckfield?
Yeah.
I couldn't go to that one, cause we had a meeting at night, but how'd that pan out?
Just doing more research and sharing a lot of the numbers of the cost of the system, we didn't find out so much.
Good. You unfinished business, town hall improvement contract approval.
So, after last meeting, Dave brought a concern up about the down payment in state law. I did some research, and that is for residential, from what I found, um, not for commercial or municipal, so I think, is it two options? Leanne, it's just one?
Yeah, um, there's one with the down payment and one with payments.
Okay. Is, is she here?
Yeah. Hi.
Um, I just have one question. Um, how do you intend on getting the fiberglass insulation in these walls?
Uh, I have, um, whether I saw, he's just going to be coming in and doing it, and they put, they blow in, they put that in.
Alright, so it's blowing in, it's not, it's not like, okay.
It's different areas than that, to our value.
Okay.
Richard.
And they wanted to do the insulation first before we do the windows.
Makes sense.
Richard?
Was, I'm sure that at some point, it was considered as to whether or not this is a historical building.
So we, we talked about this last meeting, and we, we, we talked about this last meeting, we can't change what the previous board has done, they've already accepted the contract. We're just talking about the, the, the down payment side of it, so.
I guess whatever you said, I can't.
The windows have half screen.
Don't sit behind them, up on the bed, you'll be right there and you can hear everything.
The windows will be half screens.
I believe so, so whichever you prefer.
Prefer half.
I don't know what you mean by half. Like, like this? Yeah. We can deal with that after.
If Bob will come in and talk to you more, see if you can, before we go to party then?
I'm good with it.
Sign it?
Sign it with yours.
When you're ready to just sign.
You got a hand up over here.
I have a question, if you're gonna be taking these windows out, since I mentioned it last in the meeting that they were recently rebuilt, what is going to be the disposition of perfectly big windows that you're taking out?
Great question. You mean where are they going?
Yeah, that's what I need, myself.
I brought up the point that a lot of people like the doors, so if there's anyone that has an interest in this historic doors, we certainly have them.
Are you taking out all doors?
No.
No. There's two main doors, this top door and the front one that's broken, unless it's been carried or damaged. And those are four to six weeks out, most of them, once they're ordered. Um, if you certainly can find use for the windows, I don't think we're just gonna dispose of them, so certainly go. We're more than counting to, if anyone wants us.
But you wanna make a greenhouse? You have plenty of those to make, but. Well, they're not gonna stay out well if they're out in rain, where they are right now, they're not, they're ready.
The town can't sell them?
Uh, I don't know. Well, is the town invested with the markets for architects and stuff?
I am, I am.
Alright, calm down, hey.
I wonder if we sell the windows to buy.
I'm gonna make a motion to take it down.
Okay, guys. Go ahead.
Um, I make a motion to accept the contract with the down payments as written. With payment terms of twenty-eight thousand up front, ten thousand after the insulation is completed, and seventeen, seven, nineteen when project's complete.
Guys, I get it. On favor?
Do you want your proposal signed too, or just the contract? Oh, whatever works for you. Your shirt's in cam. Sorry. How are you? I'm chuffed and wise, but if you wanna sign too? Do you want them to sign this too? That's fine, if the estimate or even, yep, if you can sign that. Do you want me to just email?
Need a witness. Need a witness to sign this?
Um, I'm right here.
What'd you say?
Do I get with you to sue the scheduling?
Yeah.
Okay.
You wanna sign now, and?
Yeah.
Enough issues with that, we don't even know if we're up to it.
If anyone has something to do with, if they want to do it.
Okay.
Deliverers. Yeah, also now this. Okay. So make this one, you sign your. Oh. Yep, yeah.
Thanks.
Thanks, good luck. Honors committee work list official pool.
Yeah, you guys have voted, so.
Yeah, alright. I make a motion to sign the ordinance committee, the work list, second view ordinance.
I second it. On favor? Okay, community residency grant application deadline, eighth August twenty-nine, twenty-five.
So, last meeting's this, we're talking about maybe researching. So, last meeting's this, we're talking about maybe researching some of these. We'll get some more information, information about what they're about. I highlighted a few little, this week, that I thought might be interesting, and the C E O professional development. Um, incentivizing local food and community evac plan. The rest of them, I really have no idea what they would entail. Can we just say we could do two? What does it matter?
The number's just seventy-five thousand, I don't understand.
Okay. I think, I think the C E O professional development would be a good one to spend some money on, seeing how he's young, he wants to learn, and he's potentially be here for a while, so why not spend some money on it?
What was the other one, D one?
Yeah.
Two months, I think there's not a real big area.
Right, so can I get information on those three?
Yeah.
And, I know you get money, but what, yeah, I guess, once I get the information, I can figure out what that money goes to.
Yeah.
Do you agree with those three?
Yep, what was the third one?
Um, F three, community evac plan.
Yep. Check those out.
Yep, we're gonna get it in front of, so.
There's no code. Wage approval, twenty-twenty-five into twenty-twenty-six.
I make a motion to accept the wages for twenty-five, twenty-six with the changes that I think you made on here, right? You did.
Three changes, yeah. First, I get it. On favor?
I just have one quick question on that. Oh.
I forgot to change that.
That's all right. On the swim instructors, does that money come out of registration for them, or is it, it doesn't? Okay. So, are those, are they free swimming instructors, uh, mountains and all?
Yep, forty-five contract.
Okay.
But, um, you know, it, it offsets the budget.
Yeah.
The variable offsets the budgets.
Okay.
Turn fire and rescue contracts.
I've, I've been asking them for one with an actual dollar amount, and they're.
You have it?
Who's the, who's the contract? Who? Kirk Schwab. And what are you exactly looking for?
A contract with the absolute. Money out from here, they have it for fire, they just don't have it for rescue, they have it for catastrophic, and last year they changed it. I had to argue with them because it wasn't one of the way budgeted.
Okay, I'll find it. I'm, can, do you have a contact email or anything?
Yeah.
Yep. Is that gonna, hold on, sorry. That's not gonna affect me until I first today.
They bad that much.
Okay.
I'm gonna pay you, so.
Okay.
Archie's collection. Look like you're here.
I am.
Oh, you are, right. I'm talking Jerry.
Jerry is not here, I am the fill-in. Um, so I'm Alexis, I'm the V P of operations. I joined the crew about three months ago, so kind of trying to rebuild the Archie's name as well as the service standards. So, we are currently in the process of acquiring new trucks, getting more staffing. I know there's been some service issues that we've been trying to work through. I know today we have two trucks out there, as well as we sent a U-Haul out to help with bulky cleanup and another truck to help to make sure everything is off the curb. I currently have two guys still out here in the pouring rain, thunder, and lightning storm. Um, just kind of trying to rebuild everything that has not been going well. Um, bulky cleanup, I've had eight rearload trucks pack out and have to go to the dump, we've had three roll-off trucks, multiple U-Haul trucks. The team is doing everything they possibly can to get it all off the ground before the Fourth of July is our goal. So, any questions for me? Yeah?
Is there a schedule for when trash gets picked up?
That's close.
So.
I have two questions, go ahead.
Yeah, so trash is every Tuesday.
Yeah, I know that.
We cycle it every other Tuesday. The suggestion is out by six A M. so that we can guarantee it is out. I know we ran into a problem a couple of weeks ago where we had, started with two trucks that people weren't used to. They started on the Church Street side, and the other guy started on the lake side. And I spent ten hours of my day chasing lake boats. So, then in turn, we didn't finish the town because my assistant wasn't able to go to the larger part.
Well, here's my concern.
Yes.
It was last week, I think the trash got picked up at five o'clock in the morning. Now, I don't bring the trash down there tonight before, I don't want it to get strewn all over the road, whatever. But I did last night, because I was gonna make sure that I got it picked up.
Yep.
And, uh, I think we're, I'm basically performing a courtesy for Archie's to make sure that I don't create a problem by having it down there too early. But I definitely wanna get it picked up, I mean, it's one of the, I don't know, there's, sure there's plenty of services at Harper's desk for residents, but that's a weekly thing, and uh, yeah, so I have questions about that. I, frankly, I didn't know when, when it was gonna be picked up, I got tired of not having it picked up. So I did it the night before, and I didn't feel good about it. We get a lot of courtesy around the road too.
Yeah. So, our suggestions, like I came from Casella Way, I was there for eleven years. Our suggestion was either the night before, or most towns have a time that we're supposed to have it out by.
Yeah.
So, our suggestion is six A M. because most of our guys don't roll out before that. Um, so, most of our guys come in between five and five-thirty, so that they're out here picking up the first stop by six A M. So, if we can have it out by six A M., it would help alleviate the having to chase things as well as it not being collected.
But you wouldn't come early just because the weather's gonna get hot that day?
No, we are not supposed to.
Alright, well, I'll just keep checking that out. So, so, we're down, we got it down there, my sister should be coming.
Yes, yeah, I know we have been running into some heat struggles, we've had guys go to the hospital for heat stroke.
Yeah.
So we have been running into issues with that as well as trucks breaking down, so we're working on getting a newer fleet. So, we had a new split body out today, so that helped out a great deal.
So, what were you going on with the contract? I got a few questions I have.
Yes.
So, one thing I mentioned is, you said his name is Jerry, and you wanna talk to him on the phone? The one thing I mentioned him that I wanted you guys to come prepare with tonight was an actual route. Do you have an actual route that you run?
So it depends if we have one truck or two. So, in the situation of we had a split body truck out and the regular rearload truck, so one starts on the Canton Lakeside, and the other one starts on Church Street.
Okay, because I don't think that's accurate, because Church Street was being picked up tonight at five-thirty when I left my house.
Okay.
So, that's what I mean, I, I, I need to see an actual route that you guys run, so your drivers know where they're going, because I witnessed one on the end of Church Street Saturday, looking at a map, trying to figure out where his next route was.
So in that situation, we had drivers from other towns come in to help get the trash off the ground.
It was the same woman that was driving the new split body tonight.
Yes, so she actually had a laborer guiding her in that situation today. Um, but they have been, we've gone through newer drivers and gotten, some of the older ones have left. So, there have been some struggles of newer drivers in learning the routes. So she most likely was looking at a map, trying to figure out exactly where to go. I know she had, we have the list of streets, which I know I got from her, to kind of help build a route map. So that is one thing Archie's didn't have, which is shocking to me, because if there is a situation where somebody has to go out and fill in for a route, for whatever reason, you want them to have a start point, so.
So you have something on paper?
That is one thing we are, I have the street list she gave me, so we are actively working on coming up with route maps for everyone to guarantee nothing is missed.
Okay, and the, the split body truck, is that half trash after cycling?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, so when do you think we can see the route map? Because the complaints I've been getting for the past, well, over a month, but since I've been on the board, is we never know what time they're coming. And I, and I see it at my house.
Yep.
I mean, I, I've always had trash picked up between three or four to six or seven. Now it's, could be six in the morning, could be noon time. And that's frustrating to residents, because like Mr. Tiff said, you think you have time to get it out, and I know you guys want it out by six A M., but, and I don't care what kind of trash can you have with a, with a good cover, the animals are knocking us over, and next thing you know, you get trash strewn all over the road, I've seen it on Church Street.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, so, I think if we can get an actual route map, what time you start, and if you have two trucks, and give us both options, whatever.
Yep.
So, we can get some closure on this, because it's, it's getting frustrating.
Yep, oh, I totally understand. So, I can definitely work on that with Miranda, so I'd say give us the next couple of weeks. Do you guys have full town maps?
I imagine we do.
Not with the roads on.
Does have the roads on?
No.
Because that would be helpful too, if we could have a full town map with the street names, then we could outline the route.
You guys can work on it. Oh, Peggy does. You did, you did your math, can she borrow that?
We can, let's. But they're on the roads on, she says.
There's a lot of English.
We'll get you, we'll, we'll call them. Sheila, we'll see you, we'll get you. I got you. No? We'll, we'll figure out something, I'll, I'll get something to you somehow, because it's affecting me too, and if it's affecting me, it's affecting everyone, so.
Yeah, definitely.
We need to get it resolved, so.
Who is still being you?
I think, yeah.
I just wanna say that, um, my time's mine, it hasn't been picked up for two weeks at a time. And my husband does for a different shift, so it's hard for him to get up and down the road, I mean, he's older, and he has our time, you know, so it's very difficult not knowing, because we have to muddy back up, and so it's been two weeks at a time sometimes.
Okay.
You got Sheila, Dave.
Dave?
So, back in February, I believe, when I was on Jerry's team, it was a scene story, we're buying new trucks, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, but it's gotten worse instead of better. So, the last two weeks, um, I know last Tuesday, the truck came by Green Acres at five-ten in the morning. Five-ten. That's different. And then, I think the prior week before that, it was ten-thirty in the morning.
Yeah, that's what I mean, there's no rhyme or reason to how these routes are being run.
You know, we, when Jerry was here, he promised he was gonna buy side-load trucks and supply
Garbage cans.
Garbage cans to everyone, and this and that, but, you know, the, the bulky waste has been a disaster this year.
Yeah.
How much extra, how much extra is our town paying for all of this stuff that's been sitting for twelve days and got made on? How much extra damage? Do you have any?
I don't have any figures with that.
Okay, but that's, that's our money, that's our money. But, in the past, everything's been picked up in one day, or day and a half?
No, 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 no.
Mostly, yes.
I was gonna say, we have paperwork where it was a week
Yeah.
For, yeah, so.
I don't remember a week.
They, Archie's had a lot more trucks that were not road legal, is part of our dilemma um, that we're trying to get rid of and off the road for safety purposes. Um, as well as trying to make sure we're doing things safely and legally, like my focus is, yes, get your trash off the ground, but I care about my drivers and laborer's safety. When a laborer has to go to the emergency room because he has heat stroke, that's a problem. Like he has family and kids he needs to go home to, that we're trying to also focus on that and kind of rebuild the making sure we're throwing extra assets out here to make sure it's done.
Our town's being for service, which is not getting it done.
I, I just, and, and I know there's lots of things, and I've already spoken my problems to Aaron, but, um, the heat business, I know that we don't get heat like that, that often around here, but I think that you should be prepared for that by keeping like five-gallon containers of water in the truck somewhere so that those guys that are working are hydrated regularly, because without watering themselves properly, you're gonna get heat stroke. These are things that, you know, you need to think about in your business to run well, so, anyway, just to suggest.
Yeah, Leanne's in question.
I just wanted to say, we've been leaving trash out here with cover on it, with the trash can you bought are years, does animals, deers, reptiles, things eat turkeys? It's never been touched. And I see empty trash cans all over Hartford and the ditch all day long. So, I don't know what that was, brush it.
Yeah, there's food going up one-fourty, there's garbage at, like, back this way, the whole length of that driveway, nothing but garbage food all over the ground.
Maybe just make it plain?
A quick question, how much food waste and huge raptors and smelling things that animals wipe, or something down on? We eat much every day. Yeah, there's, there's.
So, I guess, somehow I'll figure out how to get you a roadmap.
Okay.
Um, as long as you can get me a route, once you get those roadmaps.
Yes.
How long will it take after?
It's gonna take us about a week to get you the, once you get us a street names and everything else, we can have our labor and drivers tell you about it.
I forget what you can't see too.
Yeah.
Google Maps also tells all the streets.
Yeah, I think it's, I'll figure a way to get it on sometime.
Um, I just have a question, I don't know how much more it is, but to help with like, Uber drive and all the camp roads to keep the dumpster all year long, so then the trucks don't have to go down the side now, because I don't know how much extra it is, or.
The problem with dumpsters, uh, I think Dave can attest to, is everyone from around Turner is throwing trash in them.
Yeah, we were lucky, we haven't had an issue, but.
Neighbor, neighboring town, they should say, I don't want to call it Turner, right?
I took a lot of stuff in my driveway a couple of years ago, and then brought another truck to get it out, we got that stuff, and.
So he, he told me he was buying a smaller truck for those smaller roads, is that, is that happening?
Yes, that smaller truck was actually helping today.
Okay.
Well, I just, I heard you talking about, like, you're trying to make sure that this is worked again, so are you saying, uh, that's a solution? That's what I guess I'd want to know.
Yes.
Yes, you're working on it, you're gonna have a solution so that this is done correctly, officially?
Yep, so we've been sending two trucks out, our new truck came in, we have a new smaller truck that came on out today, and a new split body. We are supposed to be getting another truck within the next week or so, we've been sending two drivers out on Tuesdays to help get the trash off the ground that they're guaranteed to get house.
Well, honestly, I can, I can see why somebody might start early, if there's a shortage, you gotta start early to make sure you've got plenty of time during the day to get it all done, but, you know, but, no, that's, that's a solution, I can see that.
Richard?
Yeah, well, more than for that, I can manage you, and you, and you, better than I can hear anybody else in this room. I mean, here's what I've said on my microphone.
I'm just loud.
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear her a lot better than I can hear you, Aaron. Anyway, my question was, I used to do all this traction, recycle, and back a few years ago, you could depend almost to the ten minutes of when they were gonna come to our place and pick up. of when they were gonna come to our place and pick up. Do you ever see you getting back to that kind of a routine again?
I would like to say yes, but it's hard because these trucks do break down. I can't every week guarantee that we're going to get there at the same time, but.
You don't go for a lot of it, right?
That is my goal, to get back to that, that you can set your clock to the trash guy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one more question, Dave?
So, we're not the only town that have any problems. I know I have a customer, it's like one member of J, they're struggling.
Go ahead, please?
Yes.
It's the same driver. The same new driver that started three months ago. He started the same day I did.
Polly?
I think the number one thing here is consistency.
Right.
That's what everybody's looking for. Instead of, oh, guess I go and maybe we'll put it up today and then I set that guard, maybe.
So, like I said, let's, let's give, give them a chance here. Let me give them a map. Let me get us a route. And then if it's fixed, or if it's not, then we'll pursue it further.
As long as you say that, uh, six o'clock, set that time, that, and if I don't get down there six, uh, before six with my trash, find everything's all gone again, you know, rather than I get down there late, I'm, I'm good with that. Why don't you stick with something like that, so that, you know, I'm, I'm not concerned if you come at seven, eight, nine myself. As long as I, you don't come before, right?
Yeah, yep. Richard, one more.
Yeah, last one. One reason that I used to be concerned about the approximate time to pick up was that I did not wanna put our recycle or our trash out the night before because I'd go out there in the morning and invite the crows and bananas. So I wanted to put it out the day that there was no one that they were coming. Now, if you put it out in the bin, which is what we've been doing lately, you're gonna necessarily miss.
Yep.
But I used to put it out of the plastic bag on the ground. And I didn't like cheese, gross, scattering that stuff all over during the night.
I agree.
Okay.
All right, so I'll be sending you something, hopefully you're sending me something.
Yes.
Good.
I can also give you my cell phone number too.
Um, sure.
All right, yes. Oh, okay.
Send, you, you have an email?
Yes, I'll, and yes.
That'd be better. Just send their email and so I get it.
It's okay, Jerry's is all over the J page, mine is.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
All, what, other people, I'll head down outside and clear out.
Okay, we'll get back to the agenda, you guys.
Hey, guys.
Okay, we have the road contracts.
Did you see these? Should be up there. So I didn't see any changes. Ben, Ben, you had a change in your contract? Which one?
I, I'm the same person as last year, only a dump truck, we were, we're not.
Which one? The 12 yard?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
Yours the same too, Jeremy?
Um, I added a new machine moving, that's higher price. And I got $10 on my ten wheel truck also. My price for the trucks higher than his price for the truck and has been last year and not every year, but usually all. The town, usually Ben would have decided for that stuff, not mine. I'm going with the rate that most people are ever given.
Yeah, I just, I couldn't see the cutoff on this.
It's a hundred dollars.
Yeah, I see it now.
I have a note that Ben charged for a 16 yard truck last year. It's not on the contract. Is it on this one?
Do you have a 16 yard truck?
My truck has a 16 yard truck.
Well, Ben. Ben, you have a 16?
Uh, I probably charged it, Jeremy's, I'm not sure what we're talking about. We had, oh, that was Nick Austin.
You, you don't need the answer?
Um, we do, we can add it all, but, yeah, if I had it made, I'd pay it myself.
Do you wanna put it on here now?
Yeah, you can.
For how much? What's this here?
How much? Yeah, it's on here. That's the old one. That's her, that's her writing. Okay. I'm good. Make a motion to accept the contracts for McNeil Farms and Johnson Observatory?
Yeah, yes, I can. On favor? The bottom Ben at the office.
I don't know any of those. Think you may enter this.
Gina was talking. At the, okay, Paul. Do you wanna wait until you talk to her?
Yeah.
Okay.
What is it?
She also, I followed in, I thought she said the expensive jobs.
Just a fundraiser, it's my rec.
Okay. Maul has a question.
Go ahead, Maul.
Oh, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't hear, but the bottom Ben at the office is, is for who?
That's, that's who we just talked about. It's, it's for a possible fundraiser for the rec department, for the rec committee.
Yeah, we just wanted to put the bottom Ben out here and maybe put one together. It's a question. We're trying to put Ben in the front of the line.
You got one on the line? You signed both?
Yeah.
I don't know, go all in and try.
All right, moving on.
CMP pole permit. Moving poles.
Wait a minute, we missed something.
Do we have questions?
Thought they were gonna, you were gonna talk to us.
John's gonna talk to Dana some more on it.
Yeah, do we, do we have questions to put bottom Ben out or not?
You, you, you're saying the town office, he's saying the beach.
They want details and they have to stop.
Yeah. So, next meeting, hopefully.
CMP pole permit. Moving some poles.
It's for a new pole.
Yep.
Was Jerry talking?
Mine just isn't on here?
What's that?
Where is it on here?
There we go.
I got the wrong one there. I got Candace's number next, but. So, is that the only change?
That one was on your packet?
Yeah.
We didn't wanna do the, the bottom test.
I'm trying to, I'm sitting here, trying to figure what she was talking about.
Candidate night, put a date.
What's up here? We did the pole permit first.
Yeah.
So, I don't have that either, so.
Do you have it?
I have it.
She has it, but I don't. Why, brown and white? What's it for? Is someone putting a driveway in?
Just pole on Darenck Road, Ben. Sets, Ben, uh.
Oh, they still have some poles set back that I, I asked them to, more than a year ago. I remember.
This is something different.
We set back.
This is for a new pole.
And I also got a little, a month and a half ago, we got four on Pride Hill we set back.
Yeah, this is for something different.
They got an actor much who goes in and gets them.
Who submitted this? CMP? Oh. So we just need to approve this. I make a motion to approve the CMP town pole permit.
Yeah, I signed it. On favor?
Yeah, I'll ask that question.
Maul?
What, what road is this on?
Garrettin Road.
Garrettin, yeah. Do they have a pole on it? A sign there?
Uh.
I think so.
Hold on.
517.
517.
There you go. Where are we signing?
Us, yeah.
We're here, one of these? All right, now we can go to the last one.
Okay, candidate night. You sent a date?
Yeah. The calendar. When is it August 12th, the ZEA election?
Yeah.
Does it matter to me, whatever? Good for you guys.
Do you wanna do it?
We need number 3.
I was gonna say, the 5th. You wanna do it the 5th?
Okay.
We'll do, um. Make a motion to have the candidates night on August 5th. You good for 6?
Yep.
At 6, DM?
6 PM?
Yep.
August 5th.
Be a second.
A second, on favor? 6:00 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, now veterans monument replacement. We've had, I don't know, a lot of.
All right, yeah. So I see that it's gonna work. Is that correct?
Did you approve the tax?
Yes, that's what I said. I see, I have two that's for us, for Colette Monuments.
Is this on the back of yours?
Yeah, no.
I was gonna try and meet with her today, but I didn't make it.
Now, I have a question. For the candidate night, I was asking before, is everything at B and B?
That's the candidates night.
That's the candidate night?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the B and B?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, so what, what's your, what, what do you wanna talk to her about?
I guess she would like to have it set up back here forever.
Okay.
Lorraine wants it in back of the, like, tent, it's marked.
Jeremy's already, he wants to start dating.
Uh, Lorraine wants it in back of the old one over here.
So if we put it in back of it, is that a one coming down?
No.
Are you gonna see the new?
Yeah, people can.
Is it gonna face the town office?
Yes, the street.
It's gonna face the street?
For people to get out of their cars and walk around.
Okay.
And that person's sitting on a huge.
Right, no, I saw.
I see that.
I just wonder, we know where and why is that, I'm a.
He's got the content Big Safe.
I think it'd look better out back here, but.
The generator wiring is out there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, generator is.
I did, there was a trench for that, so I did go with that, so. The home.
Still has, I mean, Big Safe is all right.
Yeah, but I don't know where the wiring is, so there's no sense in putting it there.
Big Safe, I'm sorry, you were talking about.
And Big Safe won't mark anything in the town offices.
What do you mean?
They only mark from the meter to CMP. Big Safe works for CMP, not for the pad. So, the generator arm will not get marked if you call Big Safe.
No doubt.
What, I don't know. Why is that? Is that just a label?
That's how they've always done it. Like, I've, I've seen no CMP right now.
Can you request it?
You can't, you know, we, we used to know, I live in the die.
Okay, well, that's, no.
Maul, um, are you and Evan looking at a design of the new monument? And if so, has it been available?
Was that telling you?
No, we were disgusted at the town.
Was it in the, it was in the stack of social service package, what I mean?
Social services, is it social services?
Well, that's where it, what is he looking to see it?
Okay, I didn't see it because I know Lorraine was talking about, uh, you know, she wanted build it up and I think she wanted brick structure.
No.
No, what did she want?
She, she had mentioned during the town meeting, back in June, that she had met with Colette Monuments. And they had a monument that they had picked out. And it was granite. She, I remember her specifically saying it was granite.
Right. Um, and I guess, uh, I'd like to get a copy of that, and how big is that, is that humanity, is the cost?
The cost was 5,900.
5,900.
But fundraising, if you remember at town meeting, I think we only gave a thousand. Town approved a thousand, I believe, if I remember correctly.
What, Erin, what's the size of that?
The base is 40.
Base, I don't, well.
40 by 14.
By eight.
By eight.
40 inches by 14?
By eight.
Huh?
By eight.
Thick, thick, no, inches.
Eight inches. Okay, that's the base.
The upright, upright monument is 30 inches by eight?
30 inches wide. By, the depth is eight inches?
It's 38 feet.
Eight feet.
Eight feet tall.
By eight feet.
By 60 inches.
Am I correct? Eight feet, 30 inches wide, eight foot?
Tall.
Depth. And eight feet, and how much is going in? Oh, okay, that's gonna be set on the, uh, base.
Base.
Okay. For 5,900?
Correct.
Please.
Um, you might have to direct this question back to Maul, but how much did it cost us for the large monument that is set out on the, the Irish wall? You have to direct your, the question, direct your answer.
Maul? Born and lost.
Born and lost.
Born and lost. It was, uh, there was, there was a couple people here in the room that, uh, actually, I guess I kinda helped too. The three people here in the room, they got that slab of granite, put it in the ground, and collected it up and, uh, uh, the detail got it for $400.
I'm nervous, I'm nervous.
You, you put down. You wouldn't be, you wouldn't be so happy, right?
No, Ben, fix it up.
You put it down here, I squared it up, and for $400. No, I, I think, you know, nothing against collecting. I mean, he's making money, but, you know, I mean, he can use this stuff, cool. So I, I think, you know, I, like I, like I mentioned at the town meeting, I went random, and if we can find a swag, hey, it doesn't have to be pretty because I don't, those rock walls, uh, rocks of the brown rock, not great, it's, you know, they're, they're erratic, they're random.
What's random about the monument?
I think it saves a little bit of money by finding, being random. I think it saves a little bit of money by finding, being random.
I handled one down the house, which had a granite basement right up here.
Um, I think it's probably not gonna be that one.
Alright, so, someone else had a question over here. What was it?
I was just gonna say that, that I think Lorraine raised quite a bit of money by other means for the small one.
Right, it was fundraised. It wasn't all town money, so...
Well, they wanna do it, but...
So, the question is placement. So, Jeremy made a good point, to put it back there as a generator wise, that probably isn't gonna work. Jeremy, how, how big's the base gonna be? How big, what are you putting down? How deep?
Probably as deep as we can dig it. I mean, it's not gonna be, or four-four feet, but there's ledge off of here.
Oh, where? Oh...
All off this parkage, but there used to be a big rock and water, and there was a ledge over here. Until we blasted this pavement, and all of that years ago, but that... If we get two or three feet, and we have ledge, then I'll probably drill a couple holes on it, and four footers.
Three bar, yeah.
Do you think that's a good area where she's got staked off right now?
I think it's an area that's pretty much useless for anything else, so it's fine with that.
That's what I was gonna mention, is there was a, someone spoke in the prior meeting about changing the parking lots, so there would be places, parks or something like that, and handicap parking. I think you maybe should do a plan of all the space between the two buildings, and make a plan for probably really wanting to see the whole thing, rather than put something here.
Is there a little bit of something of what? Is there a little bit of what?
That's what I'm saying, you should clear that out. I don't think you could do that much, but you kind of like a plan of the whole thing.
Yeah, but I think what, what Jeremy's saying is, it's already a monument in front of where she wants to put it. So you're not gonna put a parking spot there. You can't, you're not gonna move that one.
Okay, move it.
Alright, bud.
I, I know what you're saying, but there's no, there's not gonna be a parking spot where she wants to put this.
Okay, bud.
Yeah.
I'm recording Henry, then, yes?
Yeah. I think she has it.
You do?
I think. She's already ordered it, so... Um, I'll make a motion to accept the location behind existing monument.
Yep. Okay, I second it. On favor?
So, I made a motion to accept it, you heard it? What do you got?
Accept what?
The location that, uh, Lorraine chose. Which is one right behind the monument now.
Town Hall New Stove, great.
Alright, so, I reached out to Aegren's. I emailed about commercial, commercial sized ones, way out of the price range, twelve to fifteen thousand dollars, so... So, we're stuck with residential. I have reached out, Nick has contacted Strong Propane, and he's supposed to reach out to them and see what they would charge, and get propane hooked up, just so we can figure out what that would cost. Who's our current propane provider?
Um, not fully insured.
Sale?
Yes.
Okay, so...
What stove did Sue had picked out?
I know, I was gonna look, because we found some online, like Home Depot.
That's right, I've been looking. Home Depot has some pretty decent ones.
Yeah.
Commercial grade, wasn't it?
No, but they were five by... By earners, they were pretty nice.
That's what I found. The trouble, what I've found with the electric is most of them are induction, and you need special parts to use those stores.
You have magnet.
Yeah, so... I mean, we can still get one, I'm just not sure...
Just wait, we rent the hall a lot.
No, I know.
As long as it's big safe and...
Has to have magnets.
Yeah.
Collect some things.
What's that? The new induction electric stores have, you have to have magnet, you have to buy special parts to use them.
Talking about the guy in the last talk, yeah.
Yes.
That doesn't really make sense if you rent it on the hall.
I know, that's why I'm not doing it. That's why I'm not doing it.
Reheat, yeah.
That's what I just said. I, I said, that's why we're looking into gas or other options for electric, but...
Polly?
When I got into stove, I found the best price with J's Supply and Sew over in Winter. They're awesome, and they have... Well, I'm happy with my stove, but, and I'm pretty sure they have the big, the big stove.
Oh, I found the big stove, which is still expensive, so... But I'll, I'll try Dave's, but I'm still, I'm still, I haven't given up, I'm just waiting, I'm trying to get the gas prices up, so I can prepare.
We're just not gonna get the...
Right.
What is? Uh, you're getting the, the stoves out of here, and I like the apartment size, I'd like to give some, whatever, to get it out, whatever.
Let's figure that out.
Just, just saying, just getting the word out.
Yep. Which is?
The stove, oh, you're talking, oh, I paid for one, it's been perfect.
Yep. Okay, we done with that?
Yeah.
Happy Beach Gate Keys.
So, I went down to the emergency to show the gate was unlocked, even though I gave Turner key, but failed all a key to the second gate. But I made up six more keys, I went to Turner, they wanted four, one for each vehicle, so they're all set with... Because Isaac had suggested that we give him personally a key, so he can unlock the gate, but as long as they give a pine shores gate key to...
Isn't it two gates?
Yes.
Right, so all they need is enough pine shore gate keys for every vehicle, and they don't need to go find someone to unlock them.
Can you rescue has keys to the other gate too?
Yeah.
So... I did some thinking about this, and I'm good with it, but instead of giving it to Isaac, I say we give it to the association president, and what they do with it from there, I don't care, but at least we have someone responsible for that key.
And there were issues in the past, so...
Is it possible that Kathy, if you're okay with it, can Kathy have a set of the keys? Because when I go along that beach, Kathy's spending an hour dissecting my home or to get it through the opening to get it on the beach to mow, get past that big fire in the middle, I take the shoe off and everything else to get in there.
He can come sign a key out here, can't he?
Yeah, but I don't want to mow when she's here. I mow, I mean, even around school hours.
Well, you only have to mow there once a year, right?
No.
Every month, at least. Oh, right, huh?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I work on the beach, getting all this stuff back in, you know? But it just makes it easier if you try and access to the key beyond an hour in town, off Captain Adder.
Or the constable?
Yeah, I think the constable.
Constable.
Does anybody get home?
His number's wrong. But, so, back to what I was saying, I... I'll make a motion to give the association president of pine shores the key to the town gate.
Yeah, I'll wait with that, and see how it rolls. I second it. On favor? Quick mention, resignation, resignation.
So at the last meeting, I was wrong. The, the health officer asked, was thinking about resigning, but she didn't actually submit one, so I'm just gonna strike that from the...
Okay.
Yep.
So we got three resignations. Tom Rodriguez, from the Ad-Hoc Comprehensive Plan Committee.
Is he staying on the field point?
Doesn't say. It just says that, cause I'm assuming that's a yes.
He's resigning from the position on the Ad-Hoc Comprehensive Plan Committee.
And we have, I can never say this guy's name, Tony Pirocello, from the Ad-Hoc Comprehensive Plan Committee, and Cindy Violet, from the ordinance committee. And, did you get Darrell's, is that official for Aegren?
Yep. And Chad Casey.
And Chad Casey. So, the other two we have is Chad Casey from the Ad-Hoc Plan Committee, and Darrell Bone Ness, from the Ad-Hoc Planning, uh, sorry, Ad-Hoc Committee for Comprehensive Planning. He didn't specify, I'm working on it, I'm getting there, I'm getting there. He didn't say it here, but is he still on the ordinance committee? Darrell?
I think so.
Yeah, he only...
Okay.
He only resigns in what it says.
Okay, alright. I mean, that's all, that's it.
Make a motion that we accept these with regret, these.
I'll second.
On favor?
So, can you, in your free time, generate a list of what we have openings, or do you have a list? I know we have this. So, we can figure out... So we'll do the appointments, push it again to the next meeting? So I can... Yeah, and the other question I had, in here, I'm guessing these are order in which you received them? How do I know?
They're dated.
Yeah, so, I'm guessing some of these people are already on committees? Like from, so, I'll have to compare them to that list you gave me. Does that make sense? No, we can wait.
Okay.
Okay, the health officer's good, you didn't. Any train, Seth?
So, talked to Diane Campbell, she is gonna, we talked to him again this week, she's almost gotten talking to it. So, but, now that I said it, they probably won't be here, but she's supposed to get back to me this week. I have, it's on my radar, emergency management, yeah. I don't know his name, he's, he does it for Summer. Um, I reached out to Bakir as well, like I said, last meeting I would, and Leanne mentioned that the woman's name was Vivian, she actually doesn't do it anymore. Cam is actually doing it over there as well. So I reached out to Diane Campbell, and she's talking to the guy that does it for them. She did tell me that West Paris had asked him, he wanted nothing to do with it, because it's a lot of work, so hopefully he'll help us. Lee's got a question.
Well, I'd more comment, I was gonna say, the best emergency management director we ever had worked for all three towns.
That's what Cam suggested, he, he thinks this is a good opportunity to combine.
Because otherwise, it's almost, you know, in order to do the amount of bills that would really make a difference, it's, it's huge. But if you're doing it for three different towns, uh, that actually, like, have a side project from each town, that makes a job for somebody. Really worth doing, and you might actually have to, we'll do something, because we had some very not emergency management directors in our...
Okay, we have any training? Leanne? Mal? Do you have a question?
Yeah, uh, did you, uh, skip over some appointments?
We, so, you didn't hear me?
No, I didn't, I didn't.
Leanne's gonna...
Do you wanna get an update from Leanne?
Yes. I did, that's what I did, I asked her for an update, I asked her for an updated list of who's remaining on the committees, so I can, or we can look through here, and see who's already been on them or pointed.
That's what I thought you were coming back, but...
Yeah, that's what, sorry.
I'd be high on urgency, so move it.
Yes, we have, we have performed people that... Yes.
Okay.
So the, uh...
Thanks for coming, Dave.
So the Comprehensive Plan Committee was originally appointed according to a membership that was listed from the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee Ordinance. When the members were transferred to the Ad-Hoc Committee, we currently do not have rules of how the committees run or people are appointed, so if you've got people on that book who might be on any committee, might want to be in the Comprehensive Plan, do you have any eyes here, how you determine if you're a usable candidate? Lacking any, any, um, set way to determine that, or do you have something that you would be going by for the eyes of?
Well, like I said previously, I'm not, my goal isn't just to appoint, just to appoint. They should know something. That being said, we are hurting right now for committee members.
Oh, I know, I understand, no, I understand.
And there's a lot of work to be done in all of them, so...
I'd like to solicit people with a little one, but I don't know if I'm pressured.
We're gonna do our best guess, but I don't, I won't know until I see where we're at and what we have. Does that make sense?
Great.
Commentary, if we were to follow the rules of, of the Comprehensive Management Review Committee, that was to be the chairman or the designated from one of each committee member. Anyway. And I am meaning to comment, we need somebody to represent the towns, and, you know, there's various lists of who should be on the Comprehensive Plan, maybe put out by people who write about how to develop it for the state of Maine, and, you know, since, you know, people have various interests. So as I'm saying, I don't know if you have any criteria, that's why I probably developed those rules, so we could have some guidance on that.
So, I just got my feet wet in this last Tuesday night, so you gotta bear with me a little bit.
No, I, no, I understand.
We've lost a lot of good people. Okay, review correspondence.
Did you get some of them?
Yeah, this one.
Should we give time a minute?
The what? No.
Yeah, I think it's, it's on the trashy packet.
What's this, the year? Town meeting one?
There's no action required for it, yeah, okay. And, we already approved the, the order for you, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's just correspondence.
You saw that?
See, yeah, someone thought we should get back to Zilly.
Yeah.
I started that today, I was running first.
Okay. Alright, moving on.
Gender items, next meeting.
Alright, so, we're gonna vote on the rules procedure, correct? To put down, to put down executive, uh, was that what it was?
Yeah.
No, what was the executive session? Oh, Fire Wardens.
Yeah. To what?
We had, we had a vote on to do executive session to do the Fire Warden's annual...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Like if you wanna meet early or something?
I want, yeah, so I, I wanna make a motion to meet with the Fire Warden, July fifteenth at six PM, in executive session.
I'll second it.
Get a question in the back real quick, Bob?
Yep.
Uh, this is, this goes along with what Mr. Nye was mentioning earlier, we have sat through a couple of these meetings about sand in here, and you're all very good speakers, but you're very soft spoken, and I don't want you to have to project, just talk, I don't want you to talk comfortably, you know? But, and I'm not sure, I'm not saying it's gonna cost six hundred dollars, but what I can envision here, so that somebody in the back can hear you, I certainly, I won't hear everything, but just a small little microphone, they can... But just a small little microphone, maybe one or two, maybe one for each of you, they wanna hear. With two little speakers on the side to reinforce your sound. Something that's, that's not gonna get in the way, maybe on a small pedestal or something, you wouldn't even notice it. But then I, then you're gonna project more, we can hear everything that's going on up there, and we're not like that, you know, I, I can...
Put them on your t-shirt.
I don't want that, you know, you know, just a small little mic up there, and then you get, then the sound's coming out, a couple speakers, and people in the back can be able to hear comfortably, because I can tell you when I'm listening to you, if I'm not listening real carefully, um, some of the things you're saying are important, but they're getting in trouble at this distance.
I get it.
That's all I'm saying, I don't think it costs sixty-six hundred dollars.
People are having conversations either, over there, over there, over there.
Well, that's not at the end, no, that's not...
Well, it's for me.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, in the general, um, course of listening to you.
Yeah.
It would help.
I, I gotta do better too, so.
Well, I, I'm allowed it.
Huh?
I'm allowed it. But if I need to talk, you know, and we just have somebody be like, you know, this is where we can get it, but you get a lot of people in here, we don't have, I think the last one I came to was larger, you're not gonna hear people while paddling in the big harmonies, or all hard services, so the sound pounds around. So that's all I'm saying, for the agenda items, some, just something for sound reinforcement, not something on you now, not something right up the face, just something set on the table, and you're gonna find that we can hear everything real good.
Okay.
Good.
With the exception of people who are hearing it, so how about...
No, fine, no, don't get it.
Hey, hold on.
Community, which is, oh, are we in open session?
No.
Oh, go ahead. You wanted to ask the agenda, the community, bring it? Agreement?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Um, yes, um...
What was the date? The sixteenth, you said, but by one, two?
Yeah, no, the fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
It's our next meeting. I wrote down rules procedure back at the beginning, we have to vote on that? For the comprehensive planning committee or something, you have to put it on the agenda so we can talk about it?
Right.
Okay, so we need that on there.
Okay.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Executive session, fire warden, the grand application.
Richard?
Well, microphones would actually make these select board meetings legal, because if people cannot hear what you're saying, they are not able to respond.
You've made it, Rich, you made your point, we get it.
Well, wait, oh, oh, wait a minute now. I will get your email, and I will send you an email message.
Okay.
But let me point out that the person, and I won't give his name, the person that will do this,
and it's been long enough now, it might be a little seven hundred dollars, is the person that has set it up for the whole RSU school board.
Okay.
Where they have twelve or fifteen microphones, plus one for the speaker, and, and also to pass around the audience if necessary. And he's, I'm not gonna give his name, but he said that he would come over, we would have to schedule it, he would come over and put in the microphones and the box thing, whatever it is. And at the time, and this was two or three months ago, and he said he would do it for six hundred dollars, and that's counting, that's including his time driving over here and driving back.
Send me, send me, send me the email.
And that is any, that's just any.
Send me the email, we'll deal with it.
If you got your checkbook for what you paid for.
Yeah, I'll get that on my checkbook.
You got?
One and a half, so please.
You got anything else you wanna be agenda for next time?
Well, I can bring it up to the dome on that.
Can't think of anything right now.
I think I gave you everything that I had. You wanna put the, um, comprehensive in the range, the range, next time, too, you can put that on there.
Stone?
Yeah. Uh, oh. Do you wanna talk a little, possibly reversing that door?
I've talked about it before, but if you have an idea.
Can John do it?
I don't know if it can be. Remember we talked about fixing the doors so it opens out?
Yeah.
But wasn't it disgusting that wasn't able to be done?
No, you could literally take it apart and turn it around.
Yes, you are?
Just turn the door around.
That's what I'm saying, I think it's a, I think it's a violation, because it's an exit sign, you can't have an Egress door that opens in, it has to open out, so.
Right, violation, yeah, it can be done, I'm saying.
But I thought you both looked at it and figured out it couldn't?
No, it was a code that came back at us, and we couldn't do it, it's some code.
Couldn't do it, right? You, well, the way it is right now is a violation, I think.
Oh, has to be open, it has to open in?
No, I think it has to open out.
He has to open out, I think.
Yeah, let's put that on, and I'll look into it before next meeting to see if that's the actual code.
Yeah, I'm gonna get it coming.
Money?
Money's that.
Well, I know, but I get that, but if it's a violation, the fine would probably be more than the money.
What's your place, insurance company, you never noticed it?
Well, I asked him about it when he was there.
And he did?
Said if there's a screen door on, that's why we put the screen door on, then it can...
Oh, really?
Evidently.
Well, okay.
I'll see if I can find out. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else to agenda.
Guess we can agenda.
Did you do agenda writing?
Yep.
I wanted to get the microphone, and the agenda writers.
They're on there.
Sorry.